Once it comes out to me.
Yeah.
So, I think, I think doing it meeting by meeting is fine with me, but if we're dealing with large plans, I need a, a full size of it, whatever's submitted.
Okay, thank you for your comments.
Okay, thank you. At this time, I'd like to call the August meeting of the Niskuna zoning board of appeals to order. If we could please call the roll.
Mr. Frary?
Present.
Mr. Latif?
Here.
Ms. McGuinness?
Here.
Mr. Dolman?
Here.
Mr. Antonakowski?
Here.
Ms. Pachico?
Here.
Chairman Goodman?
Present. If we could please call the first side, oh, the first order of business would be to approve the minutes of the last meeting.
Mr. Chairman, I have a correction before you approve it.
Okay.
On the, the first case, uh, where it said, um, Mr. Latif plays, uh, plays a motion to grant the variance, the only thing was left out, uh, this request is not substantial at all. It's only six inches, so if we can have, uh, Linda add this and, uh, approve it. I make a motion to, to-
Oh, I have a correction.
Before we get to your correct, is there any objection to the correction that Mr. Latif mentioned? There is unanimous consent on that. Ms. McGuinness?
Um, my name is spelled incorrectly in the first two appearances, the rest of the document, it's fine. It's M C G U I N N E S S.
Oh, yeah, so I'm one and, oh, forget it.
I would ask for unanimous consent on that correction. Every, I see people shaking their head in agreement. Okay. Any objection? Okay. Hearing none with those two corrections, is there a motion to approve the minutes?
Mr. Chairman, I have another correction.
Okay.
Uh, on line 282 of the minutes as presented, uh, it says the variance was denied seven to nothing, however, in this case, the, the variance was granted seven to nothing.
Whoops. Yeah, cut and paste without double checking.
That's why we have this process.
Yeah. Unanimous consent for that?
Yes.
No objections? With those three corrections, I would ask for a motion to approve the minutes.
I make a motion to approve the minutes with-
And I second the motion, Mr. Chairman.
Motion's been made and seconded, is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I would ask if we could call the roll?
Mr. Frary?
Abstain.
Mr. Latif?
Yes.
Ms. McGuinness?
Yes.
Mr. Dolman?
Aye.
Mr. Antonakowski?
Yes.
Ms. Pachico?
Abstain.
Chairman Goodman?
Yes. Motion is carried, the minutes are approved. If we could then call the first order of business, please.
Appeal of Chris Ann Roman for a variant from section 220-18B3B and section 220-13 Schedule IC of the zoning ordinance of the town of Niskuna as it applies to the property at 125 Van Anker Road, Niskuna, New York, located in the R2 medium density residential zoning district to construct an 18-foot diameter pool within designated side yard setbacks. Section 22-13 states that the required side and rear yard dimensions for major accessory structures shall be the same as applies to the principal building as defined major accessory structures or detached accessory buildings or other structures in excess of 120 square feet. The pool at 254 square feet is a major accessory structure. Section 220-13 Schedule IC establishes the side setback minimum with 15 feet. As proposed, the pool will be located 11 feet from one side property line and 10 feet from the other side line. Therefore, both a four-foot side yard setback variance and a five-foot side yard variance are required. Fifteen notices were sent out, zero responses.
I would ask if the applicant could please come, we're not coming forward, but state your app, what your application is, the reason for your application, and any efforts you did to minimize the need of a variance or alleviate the need of the variance or, or mitigate the size of the variance.
Um, the pool, the pool we got was 18 feet rounds. I, when I first originally read the paper, it said 120 square feet is five feet off. That's what I thought it was. So when I put in the information, um, uh, Tom denied it, but when I spoke to him, he said that it was only off five feet on one side and four feet on the other. Um, in the papers I sent you guys, I have both neighbors on both sides signed it. They didn't care that it was gonna be four feet too close to their property line. Um, did you, I don't know if you have that there, and I sent pictures of how it looks.
We are required to consider if there were ways to minimize it. Was there any consideration for a smaller pool?
We already had the pool, sir.
Okay. Was that a recent purchase?
Um, it was given to us by another friend who bought, who bought a, just bought a house and he didn't want the pool or the deck. So, he was, we were going to buy a pool, but he wanted to get rid of his, that was pretty new, so we just, we just asked him if we could have it, and we went there and we took the pool, it's in my garage right now, so-
Thank you. Are there other questions from the board?
Ma'am, this is Keith Frary, uh, just because I see mention of a deck in here, is, you're just putting in the pool at this time?
Uh, the pool and the deck and the fence.
Okay, because somewhere in here I read it was just the pool being put in, but in actuality it's the-
We only need, I'm sorry, we only needed the variance for the pool, Tom said, because everything else was exact, the right amount that it, away from each other was supposed to be. If that makes sense. Everything else was good, it was just the pool that was four feet too close on one side and five feet on the other. That was all we needed a variance for.
Okay, just, just so I'm clear, because I did not have the opportunity to come to your property, you have a detached garage, correct?
It's a shared garage, yes.
Okay. And you're putting a pool in and you wanna put a deck in, do you have anything else in your yard, like a shed or anything else?
Nope, not at all, nope.
So Laura, she's within the, uh, number of accessory structures?
Yeah, sorry, I was muted. Is, is, yes, does, she's all set there. The, um, when the deck is attached to the pool, um, it's considered part, this, a single accessory structure there. And then if the fence is directly on the, kind of related to the pool, um, then it can also be included, I don't know if this fence would be included or not, but the deck would, so they would still be okay.
The fence, the fence, pretty much for the, for, I have two little dogs and I can't, I can't take them out, so we wanted a fence in the yard so the dogs could play, the dogs could play.
Uh, ma'am, I'm not trying to, to, to cause an issue, I just wanna make sure that you're not gonna-
Oh, okay.
End up having to come back in front of us because you have too many accessory structures.
Oh, okay, I understand.
You already have a fence around your yard as it is now from the photos?
Uh, that's not my fence, that's the, that's the next door neighbor's fence.
Okay, so that is not your fence?
That's not my fence, no, sir.
And you're putting a, you're putting a fence up with the pool and the deck?
Yes, yes.
Okay. And the deck is attached to the pool?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you.
Other questions from the board?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I got a, just a quick question, uh, for the applicant. I'm just wondering, uh, I see that you have 10 feet, uh, from the right side, 11 feet from the left side, and I see that your neighbors, uh, are okay with, uh, you having the pool there. How far is your pool, uh, to the back of your yard?
It's 19, it's 19 feet, and then on that 19 feet will be the 12 by 10 deck, which will make it nine feet, but because it's only 120 square feet, it only needs to be five feet off.
Okay, 'cause I, I was reading, it said nine feet, uh, so-
Yeah, the nine feet is what it will be with the deck. The pool itself will be 19 feet off the back property line.
Okay, and, uh, Laura, is, is the deck was nine feet is okay, you said?
That's what Tom told me.
Okay, I'm, uh, Laura, Laura, this question for you. Laura?
Yeah, I'm, I'm looking at it, I don't know how that would be okay.
Because I'm, I'm just curious, because I see nine feet with a deck, so is the deck gonna be, I'm just bringing up what Mr. Frary was asking, because this is, looks like to me it's not 15 feet. Is it supposed to be 15 feet for the deck or not?
Yeah, and, 'cause it's all together included as a single accessory structure.
So that would make it six feet, uh, variance from the back too, right?
Yeah, so, so if the deck is nine and a, nine feet, what is this, nine feet 10 inches? Oh, the deck is 10 feet by 12, sorry.
Yeah.
The deck is nine feet away from the side property line, it would need a-
Well, we, I understand the, the right side, I understand it's already five feet, the other side is 11 feet, so that's four feet, the request, so what's in the back? I'm, I'm just wondering what's, how many feet is, is it okay? Because there's no request for the back.
Yeah, I mean, I don't think, I don't think so, the way that it's shown here, and I apologize, I'm glad you guys are bringing this up. I mean, it's 21 feet to the pool, which is okay, but if you add that 10 foot by 12 foot deck, obviously the 12 feet must be the direction towards the, um-
Right. I mean, I know, I know, I know in front of us right now, just to approve, uh, the left side and the right side, uh, it's just we wanna make sure that if we approve this, so she's not gonna have an issue.
Yeah, I would recommend including that variance to the deck if you guys are okay with the location, um, because it does, I mean, to me, just because I like to, I mean, if we're okay with the application, I would like to make sure that the application is covering all the issues, and it definitely looks like the deck is too close.
So Ms. Roman, you would need to change your, uh, request right now. Mr. Chairman, am I correct on this?
Yes. So we could amend the request, um, my question then is-
It's gotta add a rear yard setback.
Right.
Rear yard variance.
If we do that, do we need additional notice to the neighbors?
That's a question for Alexa.
Yes.
This is where our attorney should probably help on.
Yes, I'm, I'm sorry, I was just getting myself on mute, are you able to hear me? This is Alexa speaking.
Yes.
Um, so I, I guess, um, Linda, so I know Linda handles sending out the public hearing notices and they're based off of the radius, you know, that's required, um-
Correct, the question would be-
What was the radius measured? I guess, Linda, I mean, do, I don't know if you would have this on you, information on you right now.
The issue is if we grant a variance in addition to what was noticed to the public, we have to renotice that if we're gonna grant additional amount other than what the notice that we sent to the public was.
I think my, um, legal recommendation as to this is that if it's merely intensifying or, uh, expanding the scope of the variance, then that, there are no, uh, additional public hearing would be required under law. That said, if there is like, you're now having like an area variance and then a use variance and then, you know, you're, you're having various forms, and I would say that public, public, additional public hearing would be prudent.
Now, what we're doing, guys, what we're doing is this, you have a, two side yard setbacks that are in front of us right now, correct Laura?
That's correct.
You do not need a rear yard setback as it's written, but the thing is, is what's not referenced on the notice is that there's gonna be a deck placed, attached to the pool, which creates a third variance, which is not referenced in the notice. So the issue is, is are we allowed to include a third variance that's not referenced in the notice, or do we have to renotice this to the neighbors?
Right, the person who lives behind may have not had a problem with the side yard setbacks, but could conceivably object to the rear yard setback if they live behind and could then say that they weren't given an opportunity to be heard because the notice didn't include that.
And I think that's a fair, um, you know, that's a fair, very valid point, uh, now that you've laid out the, the, kind of the scopes to which we are changing what was included in the public hearing notice, in that maybe someone wouldn't come out and wanna make a comment as to the original request, but, you know, now that we're adding the setback. So I mean, I think that you could proceed on, um, I think the best way, you know, the cleanest way would be to just table this until our, our next meeting, unfortunately, otherwise you could, um, have, you know, rule on the application as presented tonight and then have her make an additional application for the additional variance at the next meeting as well.
Great. And then I would ask the applicant, would you wanna put the pool up now and hold off on putting the deck up till you could have a second hearing, or would you just wanna do it all in one?
I'll do, I'd rather do it all at once, it's already the end of the summer.
Okay.
Ms. Roman, you understand what's going on, right?
Uh, yes.
Well, let me, let me explain it to you. What happened is, is you came in front of us with needing a two, a side yard setback, a side yard variance on either side of your pool, okay, which is what is in front of us. The problem is, is either somebody wasn't aware of it, or I don't know, but because the deck, which is attached to the pool, which is fine, where its position creates a rear yard setback issue, which is not in front of us, and the neighbors did not receive, particularly the neighbor behind you did not receive notice of that, which we have to provide that notice just in case, not saying they will, but just in case they have some problem with it, they can, they can make their problem hurt.
No, no, that's, that's fine, I, actually, the neighbors that are behind me are the ones that keep asking us, when are we putting the pool in already? So go ahead, you could ask them, that, that, that's fine.
It, it's just, we have to cross all the Ts and dot the Is.
No, I wanna do it, I wanna do it the way it's supposed to be done, so there's no, there's no issue later on.
And-
I just wanted to make sure you're aware, yeah.
One other issue with regard to the diagram we got, it shows from the rear yard nine feet to the one side of the deck, and then it shows nine feet to the pool side of the deck as well, so something is-
No, what, what, I did this myself and I'm not like that great of an artist.
Okay.
So, what happened was, the pool itself, not the deck, the pool is 11 feet on one side, 10 feet on this side, and 19 feet from the back deck, so when Tom said that-
I, I, I will stand corrected, there's a stamp, a received stamp that covers the one on the photocopy.
Yeah.
So that's what, so that would make sense, not, if it's 10 feet wide, nine feet and 19 feet.
So, it was 19 feet is the actual pool, but then Tom explained to me, because the deck was only 12 times 10, it fits in the 120 square feet, that only needs to be five feet off the deck. That's how he explained it to me, and then he- But I mean, whatever you guys agree on, I'm fine with.
Well, if that's the case, then we wouldn't need, but you, Laura, you said that it counts as one structure.
Yeah. Okay, so if it, if you're counting it separately, then Keith's question is then relevant again, 'cause you have a house, a garage, a pool, a deck and a fence.
Yeah, no, it's fine, make it one, make it one, that's fine, I don't have a problem with that.
I think the applicant would be better with one, because otherwise you need a variance for the number of-
Variance for the second thing, so that's fine, yeah, absolutely.
So with the applicant's permission and consent, we would adjourn this and we would renotice it for a third variance.
May I ask one question?
Yes.
Is there any way to verify who the notice did get sent to the address that seems to be behind that is in question on the rear variance is to Dexter? Uh, is there a way to check that?
They did receive. So they received the notice, but it didn't tell them that there was a reduction in the, um, setback related to their property, right? So they received a notice that said that it was, there was gonna be reduced setbacks to the, like, the two adjacent properties to them, but it wasn't noticed to them, you know, that the deck would only be nine feet off of the property.
Thank you.
Yeah, whatever you guys think is best is, is fine, 'cause I, I know that all, all my neighbors are, they're, they're fine with it, so, so whatever you wanna do.
Yeah, so if you don't mind delaying to the next meeting, we can tighten up the denial and make sure that it's covering everything and then renotice everyone, um, you know, under the same application and bring it back in September.
Okay, I would then ask to table that and ask if we have unanimous consent to table?
Yes.
Yes.
Any objections? We, we will table it and we'll bring it back next month. Ma'am, I wanna thank you for your time tonight, but this way we'll get it squared away in one package.
Can I start digging, digging the two-foot, six-feet apart posts for the fence? Can I start doing that? Just start to prepare it?
Yeah, so you can take out a building permit for the fence, because it is essentially separate from the pool, and you could install the fence ahead of time.
Okay.
We, we just reach out to us tomorrow and we can work with you on a building permit for the fence.
Okay, perfect, so this way I could get the ball rolling, all right. Thank you very much, guys, will you let me know when the next meeting is?
Yeah, I'm very sorry about the confusion on that, we'll make sure that we do better next time.
It's okay. All right. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Bye-bye.
If we could call the next case, please?
Appeal of Robin Hickey Epstein for a variance from section 220-13 Schedule IC of the zoning ordinance of the town of Niskuna as it applies to the property at 162 Fieldstone Drive, Niskuna, New York, located in the R2 medium density residential zoning district to construct a 220-foot, four-square-foot deck within a designated side and rear yard setbacks. Section 220-13 Schedule IC requires a 15-foot minimum side yard setback and a 20-foot minimum rear yard setback. As proposed, the deck will be located two feet and six feet from the side property lines and 15 feet from the rear property lines. Therefore, a 13-foot and 9-foot side yard setback variance and a 5-foot rear yard setback variance is required. Eighteen notices were mailed out, one response, and Laura has that response.
Um, this, to whom it may concern regarding the appeal by Robin Hickey Epstein for a variance from section 220-13 Schedule IC for 162 Fieldstone Drive, both my husband, Nuval Burdi, and myself, Tammy Burdi, have no objections with their proposal. Should you have any questions, I can be reached at, she provided her phone number. Thank you, Tammy and Nuval Burdi, 160 Fieldstone Drive, connecting New York, 12304.
Thank you, I would ask if the applicant could come forward, state what your application is, and the reason for your application, together with any efforts you made to mitigate the need of a variance or to minimize the size of the variance.
Sure. Hello, everyone, can you hear me?
Yes.
All right. So, um, we are looking to install, first of all, we're in townhouses, so our yards do butt up against each other and are relatively small. Um, we're looking to install a floating deck that is low to the ground, um, as you said, approximately, you already lost the amount, 224 square feet, I guess. Um, we're trying to put in a deck that is proportional to the size of our yard and that would maximize the use of our yard. My husband has some mobility issues, so a very small deck would make it difficult for him to navigate. We also, with the small deck, I sent some pictures of an issue that all four homes in our row of townhouses have with water runoff from the berm, where we could have upwards of four to five feet wide of standing water after it rains, so it is not very appealing as a backyard goes. Um, so the deck would come up to that and then we'd put some, um, stone there and try to deal with as our neighbors have the water runoff. Um, I think having a smaller deck where you have patchwork, grass, and stone and deck is not very appealing. Um, these are rather nice townhomes, and both neighbors, Nuval, as you heard from, on one side has a stone patio that is up against, um, our property within like two feet, and on the other side of us, they have a composite deck that is about two or three feet from our side and goes out about as far as ours would go. Um, I think it just would add value and, and would make the yard much more appealing looking, uh, for the future, and would be certainly much more usable for myself and my husband.
And was, because of the size of the yard, it's pretty much impossible to have any deck with a 15-foot setback because they're townhomes?
Well, I'd have to have a minus-two-foot deck, which I haven't figured out how to do yet.
I just wanted to make a record of that.
Yeah.
That it's impossible to put a deck in within the side, within the boundaries because it is a townhome.
Right. Right, I assume all these provisions are written for single-family homes and not townhomes.
Are there questions from the board?
Laura?
Yeah, go ahead.
This is Keith, I believe that we've had at least two of these similar or identical fieldstone requests for rear decks, is that correct?
That's correct, so 164 received a variance for the deck, that's the one that she was just referencing, they received a variance for their deck, um, in 2014, and, um, we've got one, two, three, four other, um, actually, that's the new house. That was a fence. We've got two other decks. So, yeah, we do see them because they are obviously tight lot.
And they all butt up against, uh, in the back at least, they, the, the property line is very tight in the back as well, as I recall.
Yeah, yep.
So, so there is a precedent that this board has granted at least one. I, I thought there was another, maybe it was a different issue, but at least one variance for this same reason. Right?
Yeah, yes, absolutely, actually, the adjacent property is the exact same issue, and I did wanna note that we have struggled with whether or not to cite the side variances. Um, sometimes we have and sometimes we haven't, and like, um, Linda and I are the conservative side, because you do have the variance granted, then obviously nobody can complain, but if you leave it out, um, you know. But we have sometimes not even cited the side variances, sometimes we've only granted the rear and let the side lot lines be on their own, um, with no setbacks.
Understood. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from the board?
Yeah, uh, Mr. Chairman, quick question, uh, do they have any fences, uh, behind where the decks are?
At the top of our hill, which is the very end of our property, the house behind us has a fence up, um, and it's on top of about a 14-foot berm, so they, they can't see our deck, if that's what you're wondering at all.
Is, is it a four feet or six feet? The, the fence that you, you're talking about?
Um, I think it's at least six feet, taller than me.
Okay. And, uh, in, in your case, you're talking about your deck, how high is it from the ground?
Um, it'll be, I wanna say between like 18 inches and two feet, it's gonna be pretty low to the ground.
Okay, 18 inches, okay, and are you gonna have steps to, uh, to the deck from, uh, how's that, how do you access to the deck from the house?
Yes, we will have steps that lead us out of the house, um, onto the deck and, and, um, make them so that my husband can easily navigate those.
Okay, and, uh, my last question, when you guys talked about this deck, was anything looked at where the water drainage or the snow and so on, uh, how is that gonna be built for the water drainage?
Um, well, the four of us, the four townhouses are trying to figure out something collectively, um, the other three have put down stone, it helps somewhat. Um, I, I'm honestly, I'm not sure by the builder- Um, I, I'm honestly, I'm not sure why the builder left the situation they did because, um, it just turns into mold and any amount of rain just accumulates there. So we're going to put stone in for now unless we come up with another French drain or some other solution that collectively we can do.
Okay, so at this point, there's, they haven't figured out, uh, how they're going to deal with that water, that's, they planning to deal with it?
Correct.
Okay, okay, thank you.
We'd love for the builder to do something about the water, but apparently that's not going to happen.
Okay, that's the only, uh, concern I have is because that's all you have for backyard. And if you have snow on the deck and you have rain and so on, where's that water going to go? So just, that's why I was asking that question.
Yeah, yeah, we will deal with that issue.
Okay, thank you.
Are there other questions from the board? Is there anyone in the audience which, who wishes to speak for or against the application? Would the applicant like to add anything else?
Uh, no, I think I'm good.
I would ask if any members of the board wish to make a motion?
Mr. Chairman, this is Keith Frary, I'm going to move that we grant the variances, I'll treat them all together. Um, this board is very familiar with this particular property and the development that took place on it from what used to be an old farm. Um, we've had at least one, and I believe, if I'm not mistaken, more than one come to us with almost an identical problem. These particular properties are, have a, have a very tight, obviously, a very tight side yard because of the layout, there's also, uh, the property is not very deep behind in the backyard. Uh, so for any type of useful deck or patio or anything like that, uh, you, you're going to intrude on the side and rear yard setbacks. Uh, so there is no other feasible alternative to achieve the purpose the applicant wants. Uh, having a, a, a more stable floating deck back there, obviously, for, uh, the applicant, uh, who may have mobility issues is extremely important, if you look at one of the schematic diagrams, there also appears to be an AC unit or some utilities, which also, uh, constrict the ability of, of the positioning of the deck. So there is no other alternative, I don't see and nor have I heard any way to lessen the variance and, and still be able to put a useful deck in the back. I don't believe it's going to affect the character of the neighborhood, because as I said before, we've already approved at least one or two identical, uh, variances and, uh, I, I suspect we may have more that come before us, so there is precedent for approval of this type of variance. I don't think there's going to be an environmental effect, although I echo, echo Mr. Latif's concerns about, um, you know, the, the ability to deal with the, the wetness and the water in the back and, and would urge the applicant to continue, uh, with her neighbors, the, the efforts to try and find a solution for that. So because of those, uh, those reasons, I move that we, uh, grant the variance.
Motion has been made, is there a second on the motion?
I'll second the motion for the reasons stated.
Been a motion made and seconded, is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I would ask if the clerk could please call the roll.
Mr. Frary?
Yes.
Mr. Latif?
Yes, for all the reasons stated.
Ms. McGinnis?
Yes, for the reasons stated.
Mr. Dolman?
Yes, for the reasons stated.
Mr. Antonikowski?
Yes, for the reasons stated.
Ms. Pachico?
Yes, for the reasons stated.
Chairman Goodman?
Yes, for the reasons stated, the variance is granted, thank you for your time this evening.
Thank you very much, have a good evening.
You as well, if we could call the last case, please?
Appeal of Dina and Paul Aston Borski for a variance from section 220-18B3B and section 220-13 Schedule IB of the zoning ordinance of the town of Niskuna, as it applies to the property at 779 Hampshire C, Niskuna, New York, located in the R1 low-density residential zoning district, to construct a 16-foot by 33-foot pool within the designated side and rear yard setbacks. Section 220-18B3B states that the required side and rear yard dimensions for major accessory structures shall be the same as it applies to the principal building. As defined, major accessory structures or detached accessory buildings or other structures in excess of 120 square feet, the pool at 528 square feet is a major accessory structure. Section 220-13 Schedule IB establishes a side setback minimum of 20 feet and a rear setback minimum of 25 feet. As proposed, the pool will be located five feet from the side property line and 10 feet from the rear property line. Therefore, both a 15-foot side yard setback variance and a 15-foot rear yard setback variance are required. Twelve notices were mailed, zero responses.
I would ask if the applicant could please come forward, state your application, the reasons for it, any efforts that were made to minimize the need of a variance, mitigate the size of the variance, or alleviate the need of a variance?
Hi.
Hi.
Paul and Dean Aston Borski here. Um, we have a fence in our backyard and we have a very small backyard and we'd like to put in a pool because Dina, uh, enjoys swimming and typically used local pools. However, she became ill with multiple sclerosis and can no longer drive. So we wanted to put in a pool big enough that she could use, uh, to both enjoy and also for exercise. And we have a fence already around the backyard, which I think we can show you pictures of. And, uh, this, we, if we put it into the back corner of our yard, it, it would be, uh, both private and, uh, protected.
Have you considered, oh, I'm sorry.
Oh. We're going to, we're going to show you pictures right now. So we want, we want to put the pool in, in the, the far kind of back corner of, of the yard. Uh, the, the 25-foot setback, if we had a pool that was, uh, 16 feet wide, would be pretty close to the house. And we, we, uh, want to utilize the fence and also leave room for, uh, like a, like a fire pit area to the one side of it, so that's why we want to go in the, in the back corner.
Have you considered whether or not you could use a smaller pool to alleviate some of the setback needs?
Well, we, you know, we, we, we think 16 by 33 is not, not too big, not too small, kind of, kind of just right, you know? Um, you know, that, you, you could use both, you know, you could, you could swim in and, uh, you know, enjoy that way.
Questions from the board?
Uh, yes, would you say that your, um, that this pool is important part of the, uh, therapeutic use for, uh, for, for the condition of, of someone living in the home?
Yeah, yeah, Dean, 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 Dina's doctor has stated that, uh, you know, aquatic exercise is the best thing for her. And, uh, she, she has, she has always enjoyed swimming, you know, and, and so this would be just kind of continuation of the way she can get the best, best exercise.
I, I, I have a walker that I walk with and at Sunnyview Hospital, they, um, taught me also about how to be able to use the water in exercising. I can't use the pool there because it's too warm. Um, it's more for people that have, um, like arthritis type of thing.
Ma'am, ma'am, uh, just to be fair, it's really your, your entire, um, most of, most of your medical life is really, quite frankly, none of my business. I just wanted to give the benefit that you wanted here i- is to help with the therapy for, for, for your, for medical reasons.
My neurologist was thrilled to hear, we were looking for a pool and my GP is thrilled to hear, so.
All right, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Other questions from the board? You're on mute, Mr. Latif.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, got a couple of questions, um, to the applicant. If you could tell me, I know you said 16 by 33 is, this is a kidney-sized pool, right?
Yes.
Okay, did you look at any other options to reduce this? Uh, I can see, uh, you have on one side 10 feet, on the other side 5 feet. There's any way to reduce that 5 feet to 10 feet somehow? Because it looks like you have more room on the other side, uh, where it said, uh, 24 feet, oh, that's to the fire pit, right?
Yeah, we, 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 uh, 20, 24 feet is, uh, that, that's the, the fence that we would add around the pool within the fence backyard. So that, that, that's what that dimension is.
So, uh, did you look at any other options? That's the question I have for you, to move it down so it's, you're not looking for a 10 feet, uh, from the left side by looking at your pool?
Okay, uh, well, we, we, this, we had an initial meeting with, oh, something happened.
Oh, no, they're just showing it.
They're showing it. We, we initially met with, um, the contractor Cypress, Cypress Pools and, you know, he sho- he showed us, uh, some typical pools and we have gone to friends' house that have pools similar size.
Mm-hmm.
And kind of, it, it, it's kind of a, a good, a good, we feel it's a good size to try, try, try.
Right, right, I'm not talking about the size, I'm talking about, it looks like you have more room to move it to the right a little bit. Uh, we're talking about you can move it five feet to the right, is that possible?
Um.
I, I'm not sure if you looked at that option or not, and that's why.
I did, yeah, I, I didn't look at that, that option. I, to be honest with you, it's the first time we've ever applied for a variance.
That's okay, we, we, yeah, we're supposed to ask you guys.
You know, would, would five work if we have to push it back to, a little bit, that we, we would consider that?
Well, that's something I'm asking you, if, if you, uh, if you looked at it and if it's possible to do. I can't recommend for you to, what, because what's in front of us right now is five feet. Uh, uh, you have at five feet and you're looking for 10 feet, uh, side setback from the left side and from the top, you're looking like, uh, you have, you need five feet.
We, we, I think we need, I, I think the back variance is, is 25, isn't it? Or back, the back, uh, the back requirement is 25 feet, so.
So you're looking for 15?
We're looking for 15 there and on the side, I think we're looking for 10.
Right, a- and, uh, by looking at the diagram that you showed us, it looks like to me you can move this to the right. Um, and, 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 and again, you don't have to be five feet, uh, close to, to the fence or to whatever is on the side of yours.
Yeah, I, we, I, uh, th- this was our, kind of our first shot at this and I wanted, wanted to leave room for a, like a, you know, a sidewalk deck or, or, you know, someplace for chairs a- around, around the, the pool.
Right.
So, 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 so like, that, that's where the pool goes and the need room around it for, for sidewalk.
A- and what is, what is next to the five feet that you're, uh, looking at, there's a fence there?
Yeah, to, to the left of it?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, that's, that, the, we, we showed you the picture, the pictures of the fence, that, that, that fence is just about on the property line.
And to be honest with you, this is very close, having a fence and a five feet and a pool, you know? So, um, five feet from the fence to the pool, that's very close right there. So what I heard from you, that you're saying you could move it another five feet so you can have 10 feet, is that true?
I, I, I think, I think that would work.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman, what do we do about this? It sounds like the applicant is willing to move it, move it to the right, uh. He, he has, he has to amend his application or something?
He can either amend the application or a motion could be made for a smaller variance. You know, what I, what I was looking at is, I know that these directions are not the directions, but if you say that the top of the piece of paper, north, southeast, west, if you push the whole thing to the southeast, it would make, it would reduce it on both, both of those for the size of the variance. I don't know what that would do to your sitting, to your seating area, though.
Well, let me ask the applicant something if I can, this is Keith Frary. Sir, um, I'm assuming that the schematic, the drawing that we're all operating off of that shows your house, the fire pit and the kidney-shaped pool, was that something that your contractor sort of put together for you?
Uh, we, I, I, I and my assistants sketched this out at, at my office.
Okay, I guess my question to you is, and again, we're kind of constrained, I, I can't see your pictures because I'm just appearing by phone, but I guess my question is, is there anything about the physical, um, layout of your, of your backyard? Sometimes people have swales, sometimes people have hills, sometimes people have other things in their backyard that cause the inability to place something like a pool in a certain location, does any of that apply to your backyard?
No, there, there, there's, there's no swell, all, all really, there is not, where's trees and tree, a couple of trees and they would be coming down. And, and.
Okay.
It, this would be how, how this pool would fit with the existing patio and the existing six-foot-high fence is, is, is why it's placed there.
I got you, and, and I guess taking off on Mr. Latif's question, w- we're trying to find out if we were able to shift the pool a little bit to the right, keep it generally in the same location in relation of the background or, or maybe even just move it forward just a, a little bit, if that is going to, to still work for you, or is it something that you'd want to, to, to speak to your contractor about or something like that?
Oh, okay, I, I ki- I kind of applied for this a- as maximum as far as it would go. So, so if you're, if we could be allowed to variance, we, we probably would pull it in closer and push it over to the right a little bit. It, we, we, I, I could see doing that, I, I was just concerned about what would go around the pool, uh, you know, patio-wise, deck-wise.
Well, is your plan to put a, some type of apron or, or, or patio, uh, around the pool itself, I know normally they have an apron, but are you putting a, a larger patio around it for sitting space?
Yeah, no, normal, normally they come with like about a three or four-foot apron around it and then you increase the size wh- where you, where you intend to, you know, sit and lounge or, or have a, have a table or whatever, you know, that, we kind, we kind of see that possible, um, uh, hopefully on both sides of this.
And it appears from looking at your schematic that you see where that, those two sort of crooked lines are and it says approximate below the pool, but towards the bottom of the page?
Yeah.
Does the, okay, is that, that's all open area there?
Yeah, that, 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 that's probably where the patio, if you will, we'll call it, would go, where, you know, you could, you could set a, uh, a, a table or something like that.
Okay, so if, if you were to take the pool and move it to the right, even if you were able to move it to the right, uh, is it possible to move it five feet to the right?
Yes.
If you were able to move that to the right, you would lessen the need for the side yard setback and, uh, more center it in that back area to still give you room to put your table, your chairs, maybe a, a patio area, that kind of thing, correct?
Yes. Yes.
Because I would need, I would need a table to sit at and a chair. I can't really lounge. So I have to be at a table with my walker or with the chair.
Understood, and that's, that's why I'm asking. I don't want to restrict your ability to do that, to put something in so it's comfortable. But we're also required to see if we can lessen the variance if possible. So that's what we're trying to do.
Okay. All right, I mean, if we, if we were, if we were ten feet in off the left side, that, that probably would work.
That would still be doable for you?
Yeah.
So I guess let me look back at what we're looking for.
It looks like you're still looking for five feet.
I think, I think it's fifteen foot on the side and twenty-five in the back.
Right.
Right.
So you would lessen, you would lessen the side yard setback. You've got, you need, you're looking for a fifteen-foot variance in the backyard, in the back.
Yeah.
But you would lessen the side yard variance to ten feet instead of fifteen feet.
I, I, I think that would work. I, I do, I, yeah, that should work.
Can I just ask if your drawing is to scale, though? Because if your drawing is to scale, it's labeling your yellow line fence as twenty-four feet long and then that kind of corner piece is seventeen, which is forty-one feet. And then if the length, like the long side of your pool is thirty-three, then that's only giving you eight feet on either side of the pool before you're hitting that fence.
Well, that's why I'm saying.
Yeah, that's right. I think we want, want to have, probably on one side, want to have at least room for, for ten feet to have, to have the patio.
And is that why you've got it five feet from the fence? So you could have ten feet on the other side?
Right.
Is this sketch to scale?
It's, it's approximate, it's not perfect scale, it's, it's pretty close.
As you look at this diagram, the fire pit is not there yet, correct?
Correct.
And what look like walkways or pathways from the fire pit to the patio and the fire pit to the pool, those aren't there yet, correct?
Right, right. The only thing is there is the slat patio. That's it right now.
Okay, so essentially you've got a fence around the backyard that you've indicated, a picket fence. You've got the slat patio and that's all that's back there, right?
Right.
So you start with the pool. You get the pool in there and then you operate off that. If you got to move the, the fire pit a little bit or you've got to reduce the size, you know, you've got some room to do that because nothing's there yet, right?
Correct.
So I guess that's, that's the question is, if you want ten feet, then you adjust everything accordingly. Maybe a little shorter walkway, maybe you move the fire pit or reduce the, instead of a six-foot, it's a four-foot, something like that.
That, that's correct. I, what I was intending is being able to have at least eight to ten feet on either side of the pool for patio. And while we're at, working on variance, say, well, okay, we go five feet off the side and it'll probably end up being a little farther right anyway. But while we're at the variance process, let's just deal with it.
So I guess what we need to know from you is, is because of all that, are you wanting to keep it the way you've got it with a five, just five foot needing a fifteen-foot variance on the side yard? Is that what you want?
I think it's, I think it's a ten-foot variance on the side.
I'm sorry, a ten-foot variance on the side yard. That's, that's what you're looking for?
Well, would you, would you, would you recommend a ten or what would, what would you say?
Well, again, one of the things we're required to do is make the variance as minimal as possible, given, given all the factors, meaning what your backyard looks like, what you're trying to do.
Let me, let me add this, too, that when we were, when we were talking with the pool contractor, he said he, it can be pretty flexible of how he sizes this and shapes this and whatnot. So we knew we were going to need a variance, so we kind of, kind of went all in for that. And then we can massage it with the pool contractor once, once we're granted the variance.
Okay. So then the question is, is do you want to keep it at five or do you want to increase it to a, or decrease the amount of variance?
All right, let's, let's decrease it on the side to.
Okay.
Okay.
So what you're looking for now is a ten-foot side yard setback variance and a fifteen-foot rear yard setback variance, correct?
Yeah, yes. I, I think that, I think we can fit, fit everything in that way. That's fine.
Okay. So you'll have to just confirm with Mr. Goodman that you're willing to amend your variance request to that. Okay, you're willing to do that?
We're willing to do that.
Okay, I note that. And Mr. Frary, do you have any other questions?
I do not, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any other board members have questions? Anyone in the audience who wishes to be heard in the application? Does the applicant have anything that you would like to add?
Uh, no, thank you.
No, but thank you for hearing us.
I would ask if any board members wish to make a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we grant the variance as amended. I'll deal with both variances together. The applicant has kindly been very flexible in terms of reducing the amount of variance that's necessary to achieve the same purpose. Fortunately, I think he's working with a blank slate here in the back of the backyard and it gives him some flexibility. With his contractor, the applicant's been very flexible to reduce the need for a variance. Obviously, it's, it's, there's no other way that they can achieve this purpose and still get this pool in with what they're looking to do. We've already reduced the, the amount of variance necessary to what the applicant feels is a minimal amount. I don't think it's going to have an effect on the neighborhood. Certainly, none of the neighbors have expressed a concern about it and, or at least have made any kind of negative comments regarding the, the pool. Obviously, based on the representations from the applicant, there is a health need for the installation of a pool, which obviously I think is, takes precedent over a number of different things. And for those reasons, I say we, I will move that we grant both variances as amended.
There's been a motion made. Is there a second on the motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'll second the motion and just like to add that the applicant has been flexible and it looks like they're going to work with the pool company to get it reduced. So I second the motion as Mr. Frary recommended.
There's been a motion made and seconded. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I would ask if the court could please call the roll?
Mr. Frary?
Yes.
Mr. Latte?
Yes.
Ms. McGinnis?
Yes, for the reasons stated. And I also want to thank the applicants again for their flexibility.
Mr. Bowman?
Yes, for the reasons stated.
Mr. Antonakowski?
Yes, for the reasons stated.
Ms. Pacheco?
Yes, for the reasons stated.
And Chairman Goodman?
I will vote yes for the reasons stated. Your variance has been granted. I want to thank you for your flexibility on that because we do have an obligation to reduce the size of variances where we can. And good luck with your pool and I hope it all goes well for you. And thank you for taking the time this evening.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any other business to come before the board this evening? I would ask if anyone wishes to make a motion to adjourn?
Before we adjourn, what's our status for the next meeting? Do we know?
So the town board is going to be the one that's going to try the first hybrid in-person virtual meeting because we still can't require people to attend in person. So there has to be an ability to hold that meeting with anybody who wants to come in in person, but still allow for anybody who wants to attend those meetings virtually to come virtually. And they are hoping to do that if not August twenty-fourth and the first meeting in September. If that schedule holds, we would be able to meet in person for anybody who's comfortable meeting in person in September and still allow for anybody who wanted to maintain the meeting, to maintain attending virtually. For whatever reason, they could continue to do so. So I would say that it's potentially likely, more likely than it has been, to have the ability to meet in person at the end of September. We'll know by either the end of August or the first meeting, the first town board meeting in September, whether or not that's going to be a successful way to run a meeting.
So as I understand, the concern is not the issue of, of the ability to social distance or the ability to do what we need to do with masks and whatnot in person. The concern is, is if people want to attend the meeting that don't want to do that first, that's the issue?
It's like a hybrid, yes. So I think we have ordered additional microphones to keep you guys spaced out. We've ordered knees guards so that there would be kind of like a plastic, you know, containment system between where you guys were sitting. And so I think like as far as social distancing and safety of the board members, we're basically there. But creating a room, that room, it's a little technology kind of old school. I mean, in some ways, it's better than a lot of places in other town halls. But, you know, we still have to be able to have that hybrid option for anybody who wants to attend virtually.
And we also have to be cognizant of the fact that we have, to have a carryover room. So every third chair is going to be taped off to ensure that, you know, people aren't sitting close to one another. So not that there tends to be a large showing at, you know, zoning board of appeals meetings, but we do have to have contingency plan for like an overflow room. But we have the technology, we've received it, we're testing it out. And as Laura said, if the town board just, it wants to be the first public body to hold an open hybrid meeting before everybody else falls in suit.
Okay, so we'll just wait till we hear one way or another.
Yeah, and I'm reached out to you guys just to see your comfort level for a meeting. And I think the majority of you, I mean, were comfortable as long as safety measures were in place and we had disinfection and probably still temperature taking and stuff like that. As long as we have all those measures in place, I think the majority of you guys were comfortable trying an in-person meeting. So I know that you're there, it's just a question of getting that room right and testing it out and making sure that it works before we have a zoning board meeting.
Okay, all right.
Appreciate it.
And you guys are doing a great job, no matter what we throw at you.
Thank you, Laura. Thank you, Laura.
Okay, anything else? I want to thank everyone for coming out this evening. And I would ask if anyone wishes to make a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion, Mr. Chairman.
Is there a second? Second, all in favor? We stand adjourned. We will meet again next month. Thank you all for your time tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you.